Called to order this May 8th, meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Board of Education. Dr. Cash, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have Spanish translation this evening.
Buenas tardes y bienvenidos a la junta de la mesa directiva. Si usted gusta que le traduzcamos la junta, por favor levante la mano. Mi nombre es Lourdes y le puedo ayudar.
Thank you, Lourdes. We also have headsets available for the hearing impaired. We'll move on now to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Dr. Cash.
Thank you very much, President Deacon. We have a full house tonight with lots of great students to recognize as well as some great announcements to make. And first, we are going to hear from our students. We're going to have our student report. And tonight, we have La Cuesta High School's Bea Hernandez and Melinda Angel are here to provide our student report.
Hi, my name is Bea Hernandez and I am a student at La Cuesta High School.
Hi, my name is Melinda Angel and I also attend La Cuesta. Santa Barbara High School's prom will be at Fiesta Park's Doubletree Resort, Saturday, May 26, 2012, 8:00 p.m. to 11 o'clock. The senior class has been fundraising and had a fun event with ASP at the Howard and Dowling Building. They had a wear-in jeans to school on recent Wednesday where all teachers, students, and staff were asked to participate for Sexual Awareness Month. No report from Dos Pueblos or San Marcos. La Cuesta and Alta Vista. La Cuesta is currently conducting a Teens for Jeans drive. We are asking members of the community to donate new or gently-used jeans to be redistributed to local organizations serving our community. Our goal is to gather a minimum of 100 pairs to be distributed to this year's recipients. Noah's Anchorage and the Rape Crisis Center, the Teens for Jeans drive runs through May 26. On Wednesday, April 25th, La Cuesta students and staff wore blue jeans in support of Denim Day and the Jeans for Justice campaign, which encourages community members to wear jeans or denim to raise awareness about sexual violence and debunking the myth that person's dress style invites sexual assault. Forty La Cuesta and Alta Vista students manned the route for the Ten Mile Charle Nave run, a fundraiser for the Breast Cancer Institute on April 14. La Cuesta staff has started a WASC self-study process while the Alta Vista staff is almost done with its self-study anticipating a visit in the fall or winter of 2012. Middle College is in the middle of recruiting season for fall enrollment with the last meeting of the year scheduled for May 15, 2012. Senior Awareness Night is May 26 at 6:00 p.m. Outstanding seniors above and beyond awards for community service and scholarships will be awarded. Our senior graduation luncheon will be on Tuesday, June 5th, right after graduation rehearsal at the Chase Palm Park building at the beach. La Cuesta and Alta Vista will have graduation at the Santa Barbara County Courthouse, Sunken Gardens, at June 6th at 5:00 p.m. 5:15 p.m. We hope you can join us. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I'd like to mention to all the students that are speaking this evening, the meeting is televised and it will be rebroadcast on Saturday at 5:00 on Channel 18. So have a chance to watch yourselves then as well. And we look forward to the drive. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, President Deacon. It's on now to my report. And right in the first two rows, we have Dos Pueblos High School Engineering Academy, 1717 D. Penguineers, fresh off their trip from the world championships in St. Louis. And the final season results for all First Robotics have been posted. And 1717 D. Penguineers is now ranked number one in the world. I'm going to ask Amir Abu Shair to come forward to the podium and ask the team to come forward as well. We'd like you to be able to display all your hardware and your posters, but first, let's listen to Mr. Shair tell us about the great work he and his students and their experiences in St. Louis.
All right, I'll try to make this brief. And if students want to come up and talk, you're welcome to come share this as well. So the goal of the engineering academy, as I see it, one of the main goals that I want to teach students is that if you work relentlessly, you can be the best. I think there's a lot of misconception out there that things happen quickly. You know, there's these internet businesses and people go off and make a million dollars and all this such, you know, this, that, and the other thing. But I think there's a lack of respect for hard work in our culture today. And so I think it's important for students to really look and see that if you just simply work hard and you care and you're passionate about what you do, you will be able to achieve success every time. Okay? There will be failures, and I know we know we had some. Okay? Did we have a bag of parts?
Yes.
We did, okay? But we were relentless, okay? And we took that bag of parts at the competition. And in 14 hours, we assembled an entire robot from all these wonderful parts we created. And we were able to get that thing to work. And the first time we put it on the field, it worked miraculously, but it worked. And so I just, I mean, that's the message from this, of this season, I think, is, you know, we just, we worked and we worked and we worked. And when things didn't work, we worked some more. And ultimately, we achieved success. And I hope that, I hope that that's one of the, there's a bunch of things that I try to teach and a bunch of different life lessons, et cetera, that we try to have come across. But I definitely want kids to know that, you know, things do work out in the end if you really try hard. And even though we had some problems at the national championships and there were some communication issues between the field and our robot and all these other things were going on, you know, our robot, we know how well the robot worked. And that's what we all always strive to do is we try to build the best robot. And I think in the end, the robot, you know, spoke for itself. So that's kind of what I have to say right now. So if any of you guys want to come up and share. Want to share any memories or any thoughts? This is your chance.
Well, let's, let's, let's see the hardware at least.
Okay, so let's go ahead and let's look at what we got.
Why don't you come out, stand up here in front so everybody can see.
That would be good for everyone to know.
Okay, so the first thing is we went to our first competition. We won that competition. So that's the Los Angeles Regional. That's the one that Justin is unfurling right now. And then there's a trophy associated with that. Somebody has that trophy. And then at the second competition, the Central Valley Regional, we won that competition as well. And in addition to winning, we also won, Justin, you want to talk about that? You want to come up and talk about it on the microphone?
It's a first for our team. What did we win?
So Team 1717 is kind of known for winning a lot of mechanical awards for the physical ability of their robot. But one thing we've never won is a programming award ever before this year. But this year, at the Central Valley Regional, for the first time, our programming team, of which Philip and I are members, won the Innovation in Control Award. Andrew Richard? Oh, sorry, Richard, didn't see you there. Innovation in Control Award for the first time for some stuff we did with the control of our robot. And that was a first for the team that we're pretty proud of.
To give you a sense of this, I was talking to some people that mentor that are from NASA. And they said, who programs your robot to drive? And I said, well, the students programmed. And they said, well, we have some rovers that we're trying to program. And our senior engineers are having trouble with it. Can we get your students to come here as interns? And it just really, again, it goes to this whole real-world approach to education, which I guess is the, you know, the thing I'm trying to teach the kids is definitely, you know, hard work. But the thing I'm trying to teach the world is that we need to be using real-world, a real-world approach to education. We need to get kids out of their desks, get them moving around, get them thinking, get them engaging in real problems, engage in real problems, and just really stop having the lecture and the fountain of information coming down. Google is the new lecture. Okay? We can do, we can do much more with our students. Or we can create rich experiences for them. And I think the teachers should be, the time that teachers spend with the students should be for rich experiences, not for, you know, doling out information. So we need a paradigm shift. And so that's my crusade, my personal crusade. So let's go and we'll talk about the last thing. So at the championship, we did have, so what happens is they crank everybody's matches. So we did not win the world championship. Okay, there were problems here and there, and it was unfortunate. But the ultimate kind of vindication, I guess, for us personally, because we knew how well our robot did, is they put all the numbers of every match you've ever played into this huge algorithm and crank out who has the most impact on the matches they play, because you play in teams randomly. And so we came out on top. And that was awesome to see. Our contribution to all the matches we played was the highest of any other team. So that was an accomplishment. But in addition, at the championship, we won the creativity award. There's only five engineering awards given at the national championship, and there are 400 teams there. And if you win any of those awards, you're pretty happy because you've been singled out. So we won the creativity award for the overall design of our robot and for the way that the robot moved on the field, which was, again, one of the things that Philip and the programming students were engaged in. Philip still doesn't believe that this NASA guy wants to hire him as an intern. He keeps thinking I'm making this up. Like, I actually told the story twice. He said, I thought you were joking. I'm serious. This really happened. And I'm having email conversation. And, you know, we'll be in touch and make that work out. Anybody else want to share anything with the masses?
Amir, could we have Sandy Seal come forward?
Yes.
President of your foundation. I believe she's here. Yes, great.
It's our foundation. We started, what was it, four or five years ago?
Five years ago.
Five years ago. Okay, thank you.
My friends, right?
Thank you, school board, for inviting us here tonight. And I just want to point out that the kids all have patches on their uniforms and pins for their classmate Lindsay Rose, who is not here. Lindsay's parents, Dawn and Linda Rose, are in the audience tonight. So I just wanted to acknowledge them publicly.
I think that the robot played this game the same way Lindsay played softball. So that's, you know, that robot was on fire. And I know Lindsay just gave everything she could to softball. And so just, it was nice that we built something that commemorated her athleticism and her passion for the sport.
Thank you. Anyone else? You guys want to talk? You're so quiet.
All right. Well, congratulations again to Team 1717. I know board members also would like, offer their congratulations.
We would. And we're back here behind you. But I would like to say, first of all, that I think the legacy of Lindsay Rose's participation will really be the inspiration for this team and for the teams that follow in the future. So I just really want to make sure that everyone really understands how important a role she played. I also would like to just call up the creativity award, because to me, that's one of the highest accolades that you could possibly win. And coming back from St. Louis with that is a real testimony to the, to the brain power and the creativity of these students. So congratulations for that. And I know some other board members probably want to make a few comments as well. Mrs. Cordero.
I'll just echo the congratulations. I'm sure you've probably heard this a million times, but I'm sure you don't get tired of hearing it. So congratulations, congratulations to your faculty, to your parents, to the staff at the school who support you. And especially, I want to echo the words that hard work really does pay off. And I think it's correct, Mr. Abu Shair's comments, that a lot of times we, you know, don't give enough recognition to the fact that it's the hard work behind all your efforts that we see when we, when we see you standing up in front of us. So I appreciate the work that you're doing. I know that you will all continue to do great things. And thank you for making us very proud.
And I'll just chime in, because I'm sure your parents are probably happy to see you again. And I hope you're getting some sleep again. I don't know that the community really understands. And when we say hard work, this is not something that's going on, I mean, it is going on during the school day, but you are there so late at night and so early in the morning. And for all I know, you're spending the night there. But thank you. I mean, you really doned Dos Pueblos proud. You've done Santa Barbara proud. And keep it up.
Thanks again.
I'd just like to comment that since the first day that I saw this group five years ago at a Partners in Education event, I was marveled at it. And to this day, I'm still marveled at all you're doing. And you are so fortunate to have had this experience going on into life, wherever you go. This will stay with you, and you'll build on it. And you're going to be all very much better because of it. I can guarantee you that. So thank you to all that you've done and to all the people who have supported you.
Ms. Limon.
And finally, I will just say that this is amazing. It reminds us as a community what happens when we come together and all work, again, really hard. I think that that's a big message. I know that a lot of you are taking full loads, a lot of tough classes. You're involved in extracurricular activities. But I also like to thank everybody else who contributed, not just the teachers, but also your mentors. I think that there was a lot of community businesses who really invested in you. And I hope that you remember that this investment is because they absolutely believe that you are capable of achieving amazing things. And clearly, you're coming to us today, and you've achieved a lot. So we're very proud of you. And we thank everybody who's been involved in this effort. It hasn't been easy. It's been a lot of fundraising from the foundation, but this is amazing to see. So thank you and congratulations.
Well, lastly, I would just like to say that the Engineering Academy is growing by leaps and bounds. And we will have four times as many students in the future as we've had in the past. So this opportunity will be available to a lot more students in our community. And that's something that's really important. So thank you all for coming.
And I just wanted to add, just on that note, Susan, this is only, this is only about a third of the team. The other students, it's a much bigger group of students, are actually back. We're hosting an open house event for incoming students. So they're all working at that right now, because the work, just like I said, the work never ends. So just be aware that this is impacting not just this small group of about 12 or 13 students. There's 32 students on the team. And as Susan said, we're expanding, thinking we're going to have three teams of, you know, in the future, and 400 kids. And we'll see how that all goes. So report back. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, like the great teachers, like Amir Abu Shair and his colleagues in the Engineering Academy and at our other schools throughout the district, we also have a lot of great coaches in our presence this evening. And I'm extremely proud of the fact that our students not only excel, as demonstrated by our Engineering Academy in the classroom, but on the field as well. And one of the best announcements a superintendent can make is that the 2012 CIF Academic Awards recognized nine of our 22 teams in the Santa Barbara Unified School District out of the Southern section of CIF. A quick contextual reminder, the Southern section contains more high schools than every other state but three in the Union. And our district captured nine of those academic awards. We have some of the head coaches here tonight with some of the assistant coaches. I would like to introduce the head coaches, ask them to come forward. If they've brought their assistant coaches, I'd ask them to introduce their assistant coaches to the audience. We'll start at Santa Barbara High School. Boys volleyball, head coach Chad Orson, the GPA 3.659. Congratulations, Chad. Good place for him to be. Go Dons. From San Marcos High School, boys basketball, congratulations, Coach Jared Bradley. Jared here, please come forward. GPA 3.545. Congratulations, Jared. Girls track and field, San Marcos High School, Coach Marilyn Hankton, GPA 3.545. Boys golf, Dos Pueblos High School, congratulations, Coach Rob Schiff, GPA 3.85. Girls soccer, Dos Pueblos High School, congratulations, Coach Jose Guerrero, also known as Pato, who's unable to be with us this evening, GPA 3.75. Girls softball, Dos Pueblos High School, congratulations, Coach Lee Harris, GPA 3.889. Yeah, let's bring up your assistant coaches, too.
Co-head coach, Dawn Roberts, and assistant coach, Jeff Dell. And here's our banner. And this is our third year in a row of winning that, back to back to back.
3.889. I do believe that's the highest. Boys swimming, Dos Pueblos High School, congratulations, Coach Chris Parrish, GPA 3.64. Stay up there, Chris. Boys water polo, Dos Pueblos High School, Coach Chris Parrish, Boys track and field, Dos Pueblos High School, congratulations, Coach and new mom, Leslie Wow. That's fantastic. Thank you to all the coaches, parents, and student athletes who've done a tremendous job representing yourselves, your family, and your community, your schools, and both the classroom and on the athletic fields. It's really incredible. Nine of 22 sports. No other district came close, just for context.
And this is a tradition in our district, I just have to point out. But I would also really like to thank the coaches for what you do, because there are many long hours that you also spend on weekends, going away to games, and your students do as well. And yet, to do so well academically and to succeed so well in their athletic endeavors is really a testament to your work, to theirs, and to the support of their families as well, who I know are big fans. So thank you for all the hard work that you do.
So we're on to, I think Dos Pueblos 1717 has an event this Friday night, a big event, from 7:00 to 8:30. Everyone is invited to the celebration of robotics. And it'll be held in the Ealing's Performing Arts Center. Students, I'm going to imagine some of these students, will detail the build and design process, present each of the robot's mechanisms, demonstrate the robots, and speak about their experiences as D. Penguineers. And for those of you that don't read the news press, we also have a D. Penguineer in the Santa Barbara Zoo as well. So.
I think that's Tina, right?
1717.
The 61st Annual California Science, State Science Fair took place this past weekend, the weekend before, excuse me. And students from our district did an outstanding job. There were 1,000 participants from 421 schools throughout the state. And at the next board meeting, you're going to have an opportunity to see, I believe, eight or nine of the state fair winners that came from our school district. And they'll be here, and you'll be able to talk to those students. So that'll be a wonderful opportunity. We're going to start the board meeting at 4:30 on May 22nd, in order to have time for all of you and the public to get to see those great projects. And the last thing I'd like to mention is there's still time to take in some of the great music and theater before the school year ends. San Marcos has a great musical, Kiss Me Kate, with two nights left, May 10th and 11th. Dos Pueblos is preparing for a spring vocal music concert on May 18th. San Marcos, with Carolyn Tarco Brady, will host a year-end vocal department concert on May 30th. And La Cumbre Junior High School will be performing West Side, not East Side, on June 1st and 2nd. And I'd finally like to announce that our Employee Appreciation Day takes place on Thursday, where we will recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of all of our teachers and classified staff, as well as our administration, at a fun-filled event. And that concludes the superintendent's report. And that's probably the longest one I've ever done.
Board members, any comments or correspondence you'd like to share? Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I'd just like to point out that I recently attended the art fair at Santa Barbara High School. And it was a wonderful show from many of the classes. What was great is it was a broad representation of just about, I think, just about every student in the art classes had something displayed. So it wasn't just isolated students. And the artwork was amazing. I thought, I'm sure that some of these pieces will be hanging in proud parent homes and could be hanging in museums. So it was quite the joy to get to see that talent and made me very envious. I talked to a number of students. Students were in the show doing assignments for class to identifying elements in the different particular pieces of art to show their art teachers that they could apply what they had been learning in the classroom. So it was just a wonderful, a wonderful show. So if you missed it, you missed a great show. But those of us who got to see it, it was really worth seeing. So thank you.
Mr. Herron.
Once again, just a tremendous amount of things going on and attendance. And all of them are equally good. But just a couple, I went to a luncheon celebrating the Americor teachers that we have at our schools and got to hear the impact they have at the elementary level and other levels. And the amount of time, 45 hours, they spend sometime for a pittance. And they are totally dedicated to what they do with the literacy of our students in the school. So it was a pleasure having lunch with them. UCSB had their annual economic conference this past week. And once again, they gave us 40 tickets for our students. 30 that came to Dos Pueblos, Santa Barbara High, and San Marcos, and 10 down to Carpentaria. But we had 40 students hearing a very, very unique program. Very, very seldom do three presidents of the Federal Reserve Banks across the nation get together on the same stage with a national correspondent. So it was an exceptional event. And I just know that our students, who are specializing in economics, were very, very happy with that. I was happy also to go to the VADA Spring Show reception, not the actual event that Mrs. Cordero talked about. But to go through and see hundreds of examples of what's going on at VADA was just outstanding and amazing. Those are just a few of the things.
Ms. Limon.
It has been a very busy week. I also, a couple of us actually had, President Deacon and myself, had the opportunity to go to the Franklin Children's Center opening two weekends ago, I think. And it was so great to see, once again, the community support for our schools. We're so thankful. We got to walk around, see the site, talk to students and parents. And the Junior League of Santa Barbara actually donated and renovated one of our new, one of the rooms there. So that was really great to see. And it is actually our largest preschool site in the district. So that was great. I also had the opportunity to be at Harding School's Cinco de Mayo Celebration on Friday. And I have to say that this was such a proud moment to be there, because when I got there, the teachers and the principal said that this was completely organized, 100% by parents. And the parents were running the show, calling the shots. And the teachers finally had the ability to sit down and enjoy a meal with their students without having to take attendance or run around or do anything. So it was great. It was really successful, very well-attended. It was pretty clear that there were a lot of other community folks there. And it was also a really sad goodbye for Principal Kingston, because I was surprised. There were alumni from La Cumbre and also San Marcos who came back to say goodbye to her. So there was a lot of tears that were shed. But I think it reminds us that really our teachers and the principals play such an important role in the lives of our students. And when you see... And when you see the emotion and, I mean, it was all good. They all love her. But it was quite, quite an event. And I'm so thankful to the parents who are so involved in our schools and doing everything they can to help our schools move forward. I think several of us also had the opportunity to attend the La Cumbre Junior High School...
I think we were all there, actually.
All of us. Sorry. Foundation Dinner this past weekend. And again, a show of really what the community's coming together to do to support our schools. So, great events.
Absolutely. And I will just very quickly say, we've honored our engineering students here and our athletes this evening. I attended the Into the Woods, the performing arts production, the musical put on at Santa Barbara High School, which was just fabulous. And it was the first time I'd ever gone to the closing show of one of our productions. And it was really great because Otto, the director, got up and talked about the seniors that were leaving and moving on. And it was a great production, and the families were there in full support. And so, I just want to remind everybody that through the generosity of our community, through the parcel taxes, we do fund these wonderful performing arts programs. And it was, it was really great to go to that. So, I think that probably concludes our board comments at this point. And so, now I'd like to move on to announcement of closed session action. Item B1, Student Discipline. We will be returning to that later this evening. And yes, if there's anyone who needs to leave this, if you've got homework to do, feel free. Item B2, Conference with Real Property Negotiators. We do have, we did take action. And a motion made by Herron and seconded by Parker to approve the revised proposal from the Community Film Studio for a joint use lease for the Parma property at 915 East Montecito Street, with some additional language suggested by our superintendent. That passed unanimously. Item B3, Conference with Labor Negotiator. There is nothing to report. Item B4, we actually have quite a number of things to report. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Cash now to talk about our public employee appointments this evening.
Thank you very much, President Deacon, members of the public. It's a great, great pleasure to introduce two new assistant superintendents. One is a very familiar person, well-known in our community, Mr. Emilio Handel as the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education. Let me tell you a little bit about him. BA in History from UCLA. And he has his masters, two masters degrees. One from Laverne, one from Azusa Pacific in Educational Leadership. He's been a classroom teacher, assistant principal. And most recently was the principal of only the second school in Santa Barbara County to lead program improvement. Quite an incredible demonstration of leadership. It's really with great pleasure that I welcome Emilio to our leadership team at Santa Barbara Unified School District. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Thank you, members of the board. I was thinking about what I was going to say tonight. And the only thing I could think about was Tim Tebow's interview where he kept on saying how excited he was. And I, and I don't want to repeat that. But I am tremendously excited to have this opportunity to work in a district that, you know, I was born here in Cottage. I was raised here in the area. And to serve the wonderful people who I'm so familiar with, people I share background with, people we share geographic location with, it's something very unique. And again, I'm excited about the opportunity to work with Dr. Cash and the board on, on the progress of our district and into the future. If it wasn't for the encouragement of you folks and also many of my principal colleagues, I don't know if I would have applied. But knowing I'm going to be able to continue to work with my principal colleagues and also have the opportunity to work with you up there, it's, it's something that I'm very much looking forward to. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Handel, before you go way too far, I just want to say that it's bittersweet, a moment like this, because you have done such a fabulous job at McKinley that we, I think we probably all feel it when we know we're losing a great site leader at a school. But your work ethic, your tenacity, and the inspiration you provided to your students and your teachers really position you so wonderfully for this job. And so, I'm thrilled, and I know that your colleagues are as well.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask Mr. Handel if he wanted to introduce... Sorry. We're just going to walk you back and forth. You didn't know this was part of the job description, did you?
No, I didn't. Dr. Cash hadn't enlightened me yet.
I just wondered if you wanted to introduce your family, who will also be...
Absolutely, I do.
You know, joining you in this endeavor.
Right, right. So, I have my wife Esther here. Esther, please stand up. I also have our middle son, Nathan. I have my youngest son, Mateo. Our oldest son couldn't work, couldn't make it tonight because he was working. So, he wishes he could be here, I'm sure.
Well, for the record, I will state that the motion was made by Parker and seconded Cordero and passed unanimously to appoint you in this position.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's also my pleasure now to introduce someone new to our community, Dr. Ben Drahti as the new Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education. Ben has a BA in Chemistry from Cal State Fresno. Ben has a master's in Educational Leadership and a doctorate in Educational Leadership as well. Ben has been a chemistry teacher, was an assistant principal, and for the last several years has been one of the most successful principals I've ever worked with at Clovis West High School in Clovis, California. Welcome, Dr. Ben Drahti.
Thank you, thank you. I'm here, first of all, let me introduce my family before I start talking here. I brought with me my wife Sakina, Sakina Drahti. My daughter Shanice. My son, Atani. And my youngest son Diallo. You know what? Like I said, I was also contemplating what I'm going to say coming here today. It's not an easy thing to, to leave a community that you've been involved with for so long. But when Dr. Cash came to Fresno, and I got to know him very well, just, just the vision about education, the work that we do, the excitement about the opportunity that we have for educators was contagious. And I was very aligned to what he was doing. And then also learning about Santa Barbara. You know, during this time, I read a lot about what you're doing. I experienced tonight, a lot of, a lot of the stuff you're doing. I mean, it's an exciting time, and it's, it's a privilege to be a part of, a part of that. My background is that I was born in a different country. And when I came to the United States, I was a refugee, EL learner. And there wasn't anybody in Los Angeles Unified that can speak logbara, which is my native language. And we tried, they tried, and they tried their hardest. It's just, but, but you know, educators along the way saw something in me that inspired me to continue to work hard. And as the gentleman said, or the teacher said earlier, work hard and things will come your way. And that was the message that was always taught to me by my teachers. The football coach I had in high school looked at me. And when he asked me if I played football before, I told him yes. And he asked, "What position?" And I said, "The goalie." And I did, I did this in front of other kids, you know, and I got the same response. But you know, he didn't, he didn't say, "Oh, this guy is sorry," you know, you know. He got me, you know, patted me on the back and said, "Look, you know, don't worry about it. I know you understand football, but we'll teach you how to do this." Lo and behold, I'm getting a scholarship to play at Fresno State. And then from there, you know, just a lot of different things that inspired me to want to become a chemistry major and to become a chemistry teacher and eventually a principal, and then leading Clovis West High School and one of the most successful schools in the, in the Central Valley. And I owe it all to the fact that education is one that did it, did it for me. And I'm proud to be a part of it. And I'm excited to join the Santa Barbara team and continue the work that you're doing. And I'm real glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. I asked each of the high school principals. All right, you got gear from every high school.
I have to be a quick change artist.
I don't, I don't know if everyone recognized that. One of those principals there is a blast from the past we should recognize. And that's one of the greatest principals in our school district's history, Mike Couch. Welcome. Thank you, Mike, for helping out at DP during Sean's paternity leave.
That's great. So, you now have gear from all four high schools. Well, we would like to welcome you. And we want you to know Santa Barbara is a very welcoming community. And I think you and your family are really going to enjoy being here. And I also am thrilled about not only your, your academic and inspirational experiences as a school leader, but also the rich personal history that you bring with you and the perspective you bring. Because that's something that, that will help us, and we look forward to that. And we enjoy having your, your children in our schools as well. So, welcome. Board members?
Yeah, we got that More ADA comment there. Thank you, Mr. Tay. Thank you for making the decision to come join us. And, and Mr. Handel, thank you as well. I mean, it's a difficult job that you step into. But we have fantastic principals, and they all want you to succeed. So, welcome, and, and I hope you get off to a smooth start next year. And we're really looking forward to you bringing your dance moves to our schools.
I'd like to provide a little context for these two appointments. I think it's important to recognize publicly that they will be replacing two irreplaceable people. Dr. Cynthia White, who is now the principal, well, as of July 1st, the principal of Cleveland Elementary School. And Robin Sowasky, who is retiring as our Associate Superintendent. And while both Mr. Handel and Dr. Drahti will be compensated adequately, these two positions, within the context of our entire reorganization, are still going to result in a savings to our district of over $25,000. So, we appreciate the hard work of Doctors White, who we'll still count on, and Ms. Sowasky, who will enjoy retirement and look forward to the hard work of Mr. Handel and Dr. Drahti as our new Assistant Superintendent. So, thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Sowasky, as well. You know, you, you've really had a challenging job overseeing both elementary and secondary. And, and we appreciate all of your hard work. And I think that the sites will now benefit having their own superintendent, both for secondary and for elementary. And I think that the principals and the teachers at those schools understand the value of this new move that we're making, although in some ways we're returning to a structure of the past as well.
You lost your doctorate already.
Oh, and, and the vote, sorry, to make it official, I want to report out the vote for Dr. Drahti was also made by Parker, seconded by Cordero, and it was unanimous, 5-0.
Well, welcome. We have one more appointment to make. She is not here this evening. I'm pleased to announce that we have selected a new principal for Washington Elementary School. Her name is Ms. Ann Hubbard. Ann has a BA in Communications from UCSB, familiar with our community. She got her teacher credential from UCSB. She received her master's degree from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. She has spent a decade as a classroom teacher. And for the past two years has been an assistant principal at a middle school. And Hubbard will be joining our community and be introduced to the Washington community next week and to our school board at our next board meeting. But it's a pleasure to announce her as the new principal at Washington Elementary School. Congratulations, Ann.
Yet another person coming back to Santa Barbara, which is nice. And that was also a motion made by Parker, seconded by Cordero. And it was unanimous vote to approve Ann Hubbard as our new principal of Washington School.
Madam President, with your permission, could I dismiss the Drahtys so that the children can go home or down they can enjoy the beautiful Santa Barbara? They're not going to be here long for this trip. We'll get to see you all a lot. Thanks for coming. Go enjoy the evening in Santa Barbara. It's a beautiful one.
Welcome. All right, I think we have reported out all of our closed session action. And I'd like to move on now to public comment.
Yes.
Maybe we'll wait a minute till the, the crowd has filtered out. All right, Ms. Limon, go ahead and have public comment now.
All right, we do have public comment. And we have Kelly Noe and Carolyn Terrioc Brady.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelly Noe. I'm a senior at San Marcos High School. And this spring, our musical is Kiss Me Kate. We just had a very successful opening weekend, this past weekend. And this second weekend, starting Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, we have, at 7:00 PM at San Marcos, is our final weekend of Kiss Me Kate. I am lucky enough to be playing Kate in the show. And I would definitely love for you all to come out and see it. It is a show within a show. It's all Cole Porter music, which is fantastic music. And it is a very funny, witty show. It's, it's a show with the Taming of the Shrew woven into it. So, it's a show about the actors who are participating in Taming of the Shrew. So, it's a very funny show, lots of witty humor and amazing Cole Porter music. And we would love for all of you to come and see it. As Ms. TB passed out those cards, so this is the final weekend. And feel free to come. And when you do come, come to the VIP door, and you are all admitted free. And we would like to invite everyone else to come see the wonderful Kiss Me Kate this weekend. Oh, I'm a senior. I'm going to UCLA next year. And I'm very excited to participate in Kiss Me Kate and would love to see all your faces there. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you, Kelly. And next we have Tom Bream.
They're basically, they're just remarkable. And I can say this because my seventh grader, 12-year-old autistic Caesar, seizure-laden boy with asthma and all kinds of other issues is absolutely thriving in junior high. We heard all these horror stories about how kids transition to junior high and how, how much of a struggle it is. And he's highly motivated to get straight A's. He's a straight A student. He went from being a kid that, well, you have to pry the video game out of his hand. You have to get the controller out of his hand to get him to go outside. We had to motivate him to do his homework by giving him video time. Well, we don't have to do that any longer. He comes home and he sits down. He takes a 15-minute break, and then he starts in on his homework. He's self-motivated now. He never was before. And these are your programs that are doing this. He's got, I don't know how aware you are of her program, but the kids that get straight A's, even Bs, I think, get acknowledged in front of the whole school. They all walk up, they hear their name called, they get an award. The whole school gets to watch this. And you can just see the pride from these kids. The motivation to perform, to be good citizens, to not be on the homework list. He, if he misses Monday night's homework time, he's worried because he's not going to have time to finish his homework. He won't get to go to lunch early. That's, these are junior high kids. These are the things that motivate them. Please, go look at her systems. Go look at the programs that she has. Use that model. It's fantastic. So, thank you very much. He's doing wonderful. And I also wanted to add that I've tried to poke holes in it. Tried to poke holes in, I've been there before hours, after hours. I've talked to teachers. I've talked to janitors. I've talked to the kitchen staff. They love her. They all think highly of her. I've tried to say things about her.
15 seconds.
About her. Can't be that much time gone. I'm sorry. Anyway, I got to stop because I also have some bad news I want to convey. His success started about eight years ago. No, four years ago, 2008, some of you recall, there was basically a march on the board here with special ed, and my time's up.
Your time is up.
I'd like more communication from you, Dr. Cash. As a special ed parent, I feel like the unwanted stepschild again. That's how I felt back in 2008. And I think I can speak for the special ed parent community. We need some more communication. We need to know what's happening in special ed. Dr. Mills is doing an unbelievable job in special ed, as evidenced by my son.
All right.
But we don't know what's happening. We'd like to know. We don't know what's going on in that head, but we would like to know. We don't need to know all the details.
All right. So unfortunately, we have to wrap up. I'm sorry.
We'd like a little more communication from you, Dr. Cash. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bream.
All right, we are now moving on to item C5, Acceptance of Donations.
Move to accept with gratitude?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. 5-0. And we are now moving on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to pull? Mrs. Parker?
I'd like to pull D5 and D6.
D12.
All right. Do I have a motion for the remainder of the items?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. 5-0. Did you get?
No.
All right. It was motion by?
Cordero.
Cordero, and second by Parker. All right. Okay, we are now to our action agenda. The first item, E1, Approval to Rescind the Reductions in Force. Ann Peake.
Good evening, everyone. I have to say, this is one of those things that gives me great pleasure, because this time of year, my job's not always particularly fun, and you have had to make some really hard decisions. But I'm really happy to be able to stand before you right now and say, we had a layoff here in last week, and we only had to put one person forward based on your decisions that will be made here tonight. We feel that the initial notices that were sent to every single teacher with the exception of one can be pulled back at this point in time. So, based on that information, based on the positive attrition that we have, the furlough days that have been negotiated, it's recommended that you approve the rescinding of the layoff notices to the most senior teachers who meet the following FTEs: 4.0 in math, 9.2 in English theater, 5.0 in social sciences, 5.0 in biology/geoscience, 2.0 in health, 6.6 in PE, and 2.06 in child development.
Thank you. This is very good news.
I kind of think so. It's a happy moment for me.
We've got approximately, without all the little pieces, about 30 people that we're bringing back, and that's really wonderful news. So, I'm glad we're able to do that. I wasn't sure we were going to be able to.
I wasn't either.
Board members, Mrs. Parker?
These are all of our permanent, except for one who?
Everyone who received notices March 15th.
Right, but the permanent.
With the exception of one.
Did that include probationary? I guess that's my question.
Yes.
So, these include the probationaries that were on that list as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to move to approve the rescinding of the layoff notices as stipulated in this item.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You weren't going to surprise us there, no?
No, no. I do have a comment, though.
Okay.
I'd like to thank all the teachers, because if teachers hadn't thought deeply about this, you know, they wouldn't have agreed to the seven furlough days maximum. And that's what saved these jobs, for the most part. So, I just appreciate the fact that the teachers have hung together and helped their fellow teachers.
I agree. And the fact that we're doing this in early May is really nice, because in years past, it has gone much longer than this. So, I appreciate the hard work of all the staff and the negotiating teams. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. 5-0. I don't know if we did that twice or not.
We did, but it's okay.
It's okay. That's right. We'd like to do that one more than once. All right, moving to E2, Acceptance of the Resignation of the Additional Employees for the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Supplementary Retirement Plan. As everyone knows, we did extend to our certificated teachers the opportunity to participate in the supplementary retirement plan, and apparently we have two other individuals that opted to take that on. Ms. Chatey?
Well, you pretty much just summed it up. So, I would like to recommend that we accept the two additional people that are going, have accepted the resignation. So, moved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, motion passes. 5-0. Approval of Contract with Simpler Systems to Provide a Web-Based Budget Reporting System. Ms. Chatey, I am going to let you take this one on.
Thank you. I want to give you a little history about Simpler Systems real quickly, though, that they are a local company. I first ran into them in the early 2003 or so at the county education office. And we began working with them to have a more easygoing type of reporting. The reports that we get out of our financial system in the county ed and in even our QSS is very old, not web-based, very cumbersome. With the reporting that we started at the county ed, we realized that Santa Barbara had already had it, and they had been working with Simpler Systems since the very beginning of 2000 and late part of 1999. So, our staff and the principals are extremely used to having this web-based, incredible reporting system where you can pull up information by resource, by management code, by object, whatever you want to look at it, and actually go all the way down to the PO and drill down, all the way down to PO. And this helps our principals immensely. I'm sure John can speak to this if he would like to. And it's also quick. You don't have to pull it up, report, you know, go to the print mode, look at it. You can download it into Excel. It's just a huge, huge tool. And I don't know if Conrad wants to say anything more, because Conrad took it over when I was at the county, and when he came at the county, he started working on with Simpler Systems, too. And they've also done work at the county where Conrad used to work.
Yeah, they're a company that's been developing financial accounting systems for a long time. I worked with their founder at the county of Santa Barbara in the auditor's office, and they developed the whole accounting system there. They've worked with a lot of school districts in the state who are using the other accounting system called Escape. They've developed this reporting system that kind of, it extends the functionality and the availability of the data. And when I started in January, one of the first things Meg and I did, or Meg had me do, was meet with all the principals and say, okay, we need to do trigger cuts, and you need to go out and take money back from them. So, wow, that's a fun thing to do right out the bat. But the standard response from a lot of the principals, especially some of the newer principals, was like, I don't know where I'm at with my budget. You know, I'm not real familiar with the system we have, and I'm not sure how to get the data out. And so, where the system we have does a lot of things well, there's a lot of functionality in the system. Reporting is not necessarily a strength. And with this system we're proposing, that they're proposing to implement for us, it's available online over the internet. I mean, we could set board members up to use it from home or from wherever you are. And it's, you know, you don't have to be at school to use it. It's real easy to get to. Like Meg said, the data's all there to drill down into it. And they're offering it at a very reasonable cost in implementing it, not charging us any license fees for the first year, and any upgrades, any bug fixes, they will handle and do free of cost. And this is a program they already have done. It's just a matter of getting our data into this database, onto a server, and rolling it out. This is not going to take a long time to get out. And I think it's real important in this time where we need to be watching the budget on a daily, weekly, monthly basis to have principals know where they're at. I think this is a real good thing for us to be doing right now.
And one thing I want to mention is that Simpler Systems wants QSS's business, and they're over a third of the financial for the districts. So, they're willing to tell us, they told us that if we get one, you're free and clear. So, this is a one-time shot, and we've even done go-to meetings with QSS. Right off the bat, I did that with them to see if they would go with Simpler Systems, and they just, you know, they want to do their own. But they have no problems with us taking this on, and we will promote Simpler Systems with QSS other users, and so we can have it free.
Thank you. Any questions?
Have the system free in the future, or do we still have monthly fees next year?
It's free.
It's free. If we get, well, it's free for the next year, for the next 12 months.
I know that. We pay $15,000. It's free, but we pay $15,000.
Yeah, there's no license fee per month. After that, there would be a license fee of $1,000 per month. But if we get one other district or QSS to form an alliance with Simpler Systems, then we would never pay a license fee ever again.
Because this just says, receive the system upgrades and maintenance free of charge. It doesn't say license fees.
It's in the contract that's attached to it, I believe.
Mrs. Parker?
I just, given that, I mean, this is so important for the budget. At the same time, we don't like to hit the general fund. You have, can you just talk a little bit about where the money is coming from more specifically?
Absolutely. Fortunately, we turned in more timesheets, and we had more people participating in the MAU money than we were anticipating. So, I have filled these forms out, and I know how much money is coming, and that's why we can justify it. It was unexpected.
Can I just ask, typically, doesn't that MAU money go to the sites?
Not all of it.
No, not all of it.
No.
Just a portion of it.
We do give an incentive of 15% back to the sites.
So, they're not going to be losing out?
No. And we're, Dr. Cash and I have been talking about other bigger incentives if we can get the MAU money going.
Mr. Heron?
Yeah, you just philosophically used hit a hot button.
I saw that.
You know, in business, when you have anticipated income, you don't necessarily go out and spend it. You know, and so, the words up there, unanticipated increase in funds. We have a lot of needs in this district for money. And we've always said, get it back and keep it in the classroom. And one of the things against us is money always seems to end up in administration. And Medicare, what's the purpose of the MAU money? Isn't it more in the health than the?
No, that's the Medicare. This is MAU. This is totally unrestricted.
I don't know if it's unrestricted, but what typically do districts use it for?
Whatever they want.
Other districts, I've used it for hiring psychologists, speech and language people, classroom teachers, purchasing technology, purchasing software licenses like this.
But sometimes it's got to be used, I mean, the people doing all the extra work have to feel that there's a benefit.
And we do give back. We do give back to them. Yes.
Now, you mentioned the 15%. For some reason, I thought that was eliminated, but?
No.
No?
There was a rumor that it was eliminated.
Okay, I saw a letter from some teacher.
No, we promised that a while ago. I wouldn't go back on my promise like that.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Mrs. Sowaski?
I just wanted to add, just kind of from the field, if I, I'm not in the business services, but I work with the principals all the time, and even in my own office. I can't see my budget. We just can't, and it's very cumbersome if you try to do it. So, principals literally don't have a way of monitoring their budgets, and I think that has a direct impact on students and the classroom and achievement. You know, you can't purchase things if you don't know what money you have and do it wisely and thoughtfully. So, I'm very much in favor of this, and I think all the principals are.
We're in line with that. We paid some $270,000 for the QSS system. Have we got our money's worth on it?
Well, we didn't pay $270,000. We had to pay for both systems for a year, and that's why it was $270,000. We would be paying with CACC, our old system, $170,000 last year. We paid $65,000 for QSS. Now, the problem with QSS is it's working fine. Things are going okay. It's the reporting. You pull it up, you go to the print spool, you wait, you wait. It comes up, it looks like it's 1902, and they're very hard to read. They're very difficult to read. When you sit with the principal, they're like, this is not EDU, and that's what we used to call the other reporting system. We want EDU. That's all we heard at those meetings when we were trying to take their money for the cuts. So, they really wanted it. And I think for $15,000 and a possible free for the rest, and I know, I know we can sell this to other QSS people, because we talked about it. Yeah, it works with it. And I've talked to people up in the QSS when we go to conferences and stuff. I said, does this, the one that they're proposing to do through QSS, I said, does it drill down? Well, no. Does it do this? Well, no. And I would say, well, we have a reporting system that has that, you know, and we did at that time. So, I think we would have other people coming in to work.
And just, and also to point out, there are a number of things that QSS does well. I mean, QSS is doing our purchase orders, our payroll, our position control, and our general ledger. There are a number of things. And when you're developing and programming a system, that functionality is what comes first, and it's the reporting part that's usually the last thing to, you know, to do. And so, adding this piece on just kind of relieves them from having, to us to rely on them to come up with a better reporting package, where this can just be on, kind of like our situation with CACC and the edgy reports we had before. It's almost exactly the same, except this is a new version, updated with new technologies and new tool sets and all that. It's a pretty good product.
Ms. Limon?
So, we do have public comment. Do we want to take public comment now?
All right. So, Lane Wheeler, SBTA.
Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teacher Association. Being a regular attendee of board meetings and having heard all the discussion about this, I guess what I, the comments that I like to make reflect, when a new program is brought on, I guess a more detailed analysis needs to be done, because I sat in this boardroom and heard that QSS is going to be the thing that will solve our problems, that will help us get good financial information. Having been a school site council chair, I know how important it is for school sites to know how much money they have. It's a little dismay that in a very short period of time that we're being told that QSS does not do what we really need it to do. I heard what Conrad just said, that it covers a lot of functions well, but this seems like such a basic function that I'm wondering why that at least wasn't pointed out as a potential drawback to the system when, before purchase was made. I think it's sort of, I guess, symptomatic of what I see as kind of a repetitive issue that happens when these programs are bought on. We get the great dog and pony show, and yet we get it here and start working with it, and we find out it has some deficiencies. So, I would encourage, just like you encourage our daily, the teaching that occurs in the daily classroom, to be as thorough and as complete as possible. I would think we need that when we're purchasing new programs. If this is, in fact, the fix that it does, and it's a one-time expense, then I think that's a, you know, SBTA, I believe, would probably be in support of that. I can't speak for the group, but I, my personal opinion is that it would. But I guess I would like to know that that's a guarantee that's going to come with this, that it's one-time money, and that it is going to solve the problem, and it is going to give both educators and administrators the ability to get the detailed information that they need. Thank you.
Board members, any other, excuse me, questions or comments?
No, but I'll go ahead and move to approve the contract with Simpler Systems to provide a web-based budget reporting system.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion. Passes. 5-0. I just wanted to say also, the fact that this is web-based and people can access I just wanted to say also, the fact that this is web-based and people can access it wherever they are, because a lot of times, we have staff here late, late at night, and so, fortunately, they may be working late, late at night at home, but at least in weekends. But there is that flexibility. Ms. Limone.
And actually, I wanted to, sorry, we didn't do a comment right before the vote, but I wanted to see if the district had any response to Mr. Wheeler's comments. Do we really feel that this will be the solution that we need?
Well, I think it's going to make life for the principals a lot nicer. For one thing, they can, they can save these reports. So, once they get them exactly the way they want them, boom. They just go on there, click on them, they're there at right on, takes two seconds. These guys are busy, and we're here to help them get the information they need. The reason why we went with QSS is not solely because it was going to solve all our problems. We have, we had other issues, and we're working on those too. But those are, those are people issues, you know? Those are leadership issues in our accounting and in our payroll department. Those are coming along just fine. QSS was basically because C E C C was spending too much money, and they were spending it on the old system, not advancing the new system. So, we saved over $100,000 going from C E C C to QSS. And yes, QSS is doing fine. Every time you implement a new financial system, you're going to have bugs. It's going to take a year, year, maybe two, to get all the bugs out. That's implementing a new financial system. I've done it, at least this is my third time. So, the reporting will make it easier for our staff and for admin.
Thank you, Mr. T.
Thank you for those explanations. We are now moving on to E4, approval of authority to enter contract negotiations with T E L A C U, TeleCue, I guess. Construction management for program management services for current Measure Q 2010 and Measure R 2010 capital projects, bond issues, replacement of portable classrooms with permanent structures, and deferred maintenance replacement schedules. Mr. Hedjung.
I'm going to start by saying that. No, go ahead, Dave. Dave's the, Dave has all the knowledge. But from a large systems perspective, this is our first step down the road of getting help and support in our modernization, renovation, and our new construction, which we're responsible, obviously, for millions of dollars in school facilities that exist and need renovation and modernization. And then, we have over $100 million of the taxpayers' money in which to do that with. And we want to make sure that we're doing that in the most judicious way and the best way possible. And with that in mind, we did send out a request for qualifications. And Dave can take it from there.
We had 11 responders to the requests, and we reviewed those, and we're coming to you with our recommendation. I think the thing to remember is that we have bond money to spend, and I think the board would like a more, as I understand it, you would like a more comprehensive picture of what we have in Measures Q and R, where we are, a big-picture schedule with costs put in that you can look at to help you make sure that you have your priorities the way you want them when you approve projects as we bring them forward. We also need some assistance, or would like some assistance, with master planning, not only for this, but for projects that won't be covered by this, for replacing portables with some permanent classrooms in the future, so they don't have to buy any more portables, with creating some standards, so everybody knows when a room or an area gets renovated, they know what they can expect. It's just clarity, and especially, not just with the board, for the public and our bond oversight committees.
A brief reminder, there's only three of them in our district that are doing that, that are responsible for what I've described earlier. Dave, Dave, and Carl. And no matter how hard they work or what they do, there simply isn't enough Dave, Dave, and Carl. And my philosophy has been from the beginning that when you have temporary funding, like a bond measure, I would prefer hiring somebody that can come in, give us the work that we need, and not be a permanent employee in our district. And what the plan would be, would be to bring forward segmented proposals to you from TeleCue. For example, when we get to the facility's master planning, what they would do, what the anticipated cost would be, where those funds would come from, and what the project or the product would be that the board would have and our district would have as a result of that. We may get to the point where both Dave and I desperately want to replace our portables with permanent classrooms, but that may be some planning that we can't do for a number of years, just because of funding limitations. Just even the planning part, though, I'll probably be in here advocating that we still need to plan for it, because I think we, we need to really be truthful about the fact that portable classrooms end up becoming permanently bad classrooms. And we'd like to replace them with permanent buildings. So, that's the idea with hiring this firm or a firm like TeleCue to come forward.
A majority of their work would be within the first couple of years, but we're going to have a component of needing them for a minor portion of keeping that schedule and updating that schedule as we move towards the end. So, while we don't anticipate a permanent employee, we anticipate a drawdown to say of maybe one person to keep that schedule and adjust it as we go, as we get new bids, as we award projects, as actual costs become known, to keep adjusting that. So, the board always has up-to-date information.
Board members, Mrs. Parker.
This is, you're just looking for authority to enter contract negotiations, so this isn't the contract.
We're selecting the firm, and we're asking your permission now to negotiate contracts to be brought back to the board for approval.
This is the same as if we were bringing forward architects, same sort of concept.
Well, I recognize that fellow board members will probably have questions to chime in, but I'd like to, in the interest of time, go ahead and get a motion on the floor. And I'm going to move to approve the authority to enter contract negotiations with T L A C U.
Second.
Discussion? Any questions?
We're not.
No? Well, I would just like to say just a few things. We have a lot of collective history in the district and knowledge about our facilities. And so, as you move forward with these, this organization, I guess I'd like to know how that, how you're going to integrate. I mean, they come on board, it's a brand-new district for them, you know the moving parts. How do you coordinate with them?
That's the job of just not myself and our project managers, but our head of maintenance, Bruce Chavez, and our two maintenance leads, Dave Thomas and Steve Vizelini. When you get down to that level, that's really where the history is of what past problems have been, when were roofs last replaced, where are, where are hidden problems that we foresee popping up in the 10 years. Having these people interact with them and providing them with that information so they can put the program together is crucial. And the nice thing is, is this is proposed to be an estimated cost at an hourly rate, and it gives you the flexibilities of board to say down the road, well, I'd really like to know this. Well, we should be able to be able to provide that for you.
Okay. And I know the answer to this, because I've already asked this question, but I'd just like to say it publicly. It's your belief that this organization is forward-thinking in terms of sustainable practices, and that the advice they will give us will move us in that direction?
Of course.
We wouldn't look at anybody that couldn't do that.
No, it's, it's not just what we believe and what we strive for. There's enough regulations in place now where, where everybody is looking at sustainability. And so, it's what we've been doing for the past five years, I guess you can say, a lot of other districts and a lot of other communities are now catching up to that. We're kind of, you know, the one step ahead, as we have been. There's a lot of districts that have done a lot of great sustainable things that may be further ahead than us on certain types of projects, like photovoltaics or something else. But we've had the green conscience since I've come to this district in 2000.
Right. And I look forward to having them help us with projects like, say, replacing the asphalt at Cleveland School, because I do think there are some innovative things that we can do and think outside the box along those lines.
We've had at least two, and we'll be having more discussions with that principal. So, that contract will come back with.
Good.
The one you approved tonight will come back with adjustments.
Good.
And then, if I may be so bold as to ask at the end of the meeting if we could revisit one item, because there was a substitute resolution, and it wasn't put in the record when you approved the consent agenda, that there was a substitute resolution. We had an incorrect contractor name on Resolution 55.
We'll come back to that. Thank you.
Just one question. I mean, is there ballpark fiscal impact that we're talking about for what we're doing tonight?
My estimate would be, would be probably 1% of the total bond, you know, maybe as much as $1 million over the lifetime of their work. That would be probably the guess. We don't have a long-range facilities plan. We don't have renovation and replacement plan. Those are all things that we definitely need that are not related to the bond. But that would be my best guess.
But just like in the first year, just getting organized and gathering data?
It's probably going to be, the first year may be the most expensive year, because they're going to be getting all, they'll probably have to interview, as David said, interview lots of boots on the ground and get as much information as they can.
All right. We can vote on this now. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no motion, passes 5-0. Thank you. We look forward to hearing more and seeing those come back to us. We're now moving on to E5, approval of the 2012-13 school year calendars, which reflect the seven furlough days. I see Ms. Peake is coming up.
The language of the agreement between the district and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association states that future calendar decisions shall be made by August 31st, one year prior to implementation. Based on the recent TA agreement with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, that calendars now need to reflect the seven furlough days. What I attached there are the traditional calendar reflecting seven furlough days, and our year-round school calendar reflecting seven furlough days. They reflect two days at the start of the school year in terms of professional development. And then, the last five days of the school year are now furlough days. So, we kind of shortened the year by a week, essentially.
School will be out in May.
Yes.
Mrs. Parker.
Thank you. The big question mark for me is, of course, if the governor's tax measures pass in November, we would be back in negotiations to quickly try to add those five days of school back to the end of the calendar. We would continue school into June. Question mark for me is graduation day. Beyond families, travel, hotel arrangements, rentals for the schools for the day, they have to put in what used to be grad night is now grad day, the trip to Disneyland the next day after graduate, they have to reserve all these things. And I don't know that they can change that in December. So, what will happen to graduation day if the governor's tax measures pass?
It'll move.
So, then what happens to, how are you going to work that?
Well, my experience as a high school principal is that not as many as maybe expected book their travel plans prior to January, February.
What about things like the grad day? What about the trip to Disneyland?
Well, that whole trip is changing. I mean, that's a moving target. So, it could be different next year than it is this year. So, it's already after school has, is technically over for us. So, I would leave that up to the high schools to decide how they wanted to manage that, which I did this year. And I don't have, I mean, if the, if you're looking for that we would absolutely have it on a specific day, no matter what the last day of school is, I would hope, I wouldn't propose that.
Well, I mean, it helps for parents to know that it absolutely is possible that it will change.
We'll be, yeah, I would hope that'll be communicated with parents.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Limone.
Actually, we have public comments.
Just one technical thing, just real quick. If you scroll down tiny bit, or scroll up, I guess, you have 180 days there down on students.
Oh, yes.
And I really think it's 175.
It's 175. That needs to be edited.
Thank you.
Public comment, we have Lane Wheeler.
One, Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. As the calendar was made public, I have had a number of comments from teachers regarding the first conference period. And I know that we can't change this without a side letter or an MOU or something, but I will call to your attention that there is some concern with it falling after the Thanksgiving break. I think Robin and I have discussed this before. We are on trimesters. That is 13 weeks out. That's what it should reflect. Anybody who's done calendar, and I'm, I'm at a point where I think I can safely say I loathe calendars. This one is, I think, impacted by a couple of things. One, the trimester issue. One, the fact that Veterans Day has to be celebrated on the day or the following Monday or Friday preceding Friday. And that would give a four-day week. So, now, we're talking about the 5th of November. So, while we support the calendar as it has been edited, I will throw that out to you. I have asked the teachers who have contacted me if their principals have contacted Dr. Cash. And since he and I haven't talked about this, I'm going to guess that he hasn't heard from any principals, which to me is astounding, because it should be an issue that I believe is being brought forth by both administration and the Teachers Association. So, I will simply throw this out as a point of consideration that we may wish to deal with at some point in the future with a side letter, if we believe that is something that needs to be dealt with. I have not heard this from a large majority. One school site has reported in, and they said, one person reported that everybody, and it is an agreement, that it needs to change. So, I will simply put that out there as a point of information. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the 2012-13 school year calendars reflecting seven furlough days.
Do you have a second?
I will second that.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Peake. Moving on to E6, approval of services agreement from InterQuest Detection Canines. Mr. Sumter.
Good evening. At a previous board meeting, the board voted to approve entering into a contract with InterQuest Detection Canines for services of their contraband detection docs. So, what you have before you now is a contract that was developed and was examined and modified and played with by our attorneys to make sure we had a legal contract in place. It has been accepted by InterQuest Company, and now it's before you for discussion and hopefully approval.
Thank you. Ms. Limone.
I do have a couple of questions. I know, I'm, I know that protocols will be forthcoming, but I was curious, in the first page of the service agreement, under three scopes of service, we talk about it being a random process. Do you have any thoughts or ideas on, and let me go back and say, that the process of identifying classrooms will be random. Do you have any thoughts or ideas on what random will mean?
Yes. Well, why don't I distribute these now? These are protocols that I can give to you now, and there are copies in the back also for anybody who else. Take a look at them. While I will do a few.
I'll have to go.
This was, the first version of this was presented to the board in a board brief earlier. There are some slight revisions to it or modifications based on input from the board. So, the answer to your question, Ms. Limone, is actually noted under visit protocol on the first page of this. Did I give you enough?
Yes, we passed too many down.
Okay.
We'll get it.
I have one more.
Now, everybody has one.
Okay. But she'll note on the first page under visit protocol, third bullet down talks about how to, or possible selection processes for making this random. Indicated there is just drawing room numbers out of a bowl. Another one would be the InterQuest handle selects location within administrator, without administrator input, just the roll of a dice and getting the room numbers or locations presented by that. And one. And one suggestion mentioned by a board member was to assign a number to each area, like a parking lot or cafeteria and classrooms, just random numbers, and then use a random number generator to make a determination. So I would, I would recommend to the random number generator to make it very specifically random, probably more so than even the others.
Great, thank you. And the second question I have is on item number 17, which is, I think, page three, where it says write of retention, it talks about data that we're going to gather. And so I think that one of the things that's really important is that when we do collect data, that it's used well, and I didn't know if you had any thoughts on how the district will use the data that InterQuest is going to be collecting slash the district is going to be collecting.
Well, initially, of course, the, part of the data will help us determine if it's successful in keeping controlled substances off of our campuses. We can get this data monthly or quarterly, however we request it from the company, and that data would include what kinds of alerts they had, where they were located, whether it was a residual odor or the actual substance was found or some kind of contraband was found, no identification of students would be included. And so that data could help us determine what kind of issues we are facing in our schools and how maybe to address them, what kind of connections we need to make for families or students for additional services outside the school.
So do you anticipate kind of reviewing the data after a year and possibly bringing, if appropriate, bringing modifications to the board if needed?
Definitely, yeah. This, this is an initial proposal, and we may find things needed to be adjusted along the way.
Great, thank you.
So board members, we have before us today the approval of the services agreement. I know that since we just got the protocols, that board members will probably wanna look those over carefully and perhaps provide you with additional feedback as we did in the first round, and thank you for giving those to us.
Sure, and if you'd like, I can send it to you electronically, and you can, you know, respond with that.
And we have time.
Okay.
Okay.
I am just curious on one thing, did you investigate further the issue of false positives and the effect that has on students who've been pulled out of the classroom and sent to the administrative office with their backpack? I talked to an administrator, a former administrator at Bishop Diego High School, and he said that was one of their biggest problems originally, was the false positives and, and the stigma that a student would get because they would pull out of a classroom.
Well, at first I'd need to understand what they meant, or you mean by false positive. I mean, if, if they're, the dogs alert, they're gonna alert on something, whether it's residual or a substance, and if by false positive, you mean there is no substance there?
No substance, yeah, there's nothing there.
Okay.
You get there and you open up a backpack and there's nothing there.
Right, well, there, there would need to be some communication with the student and the parent about what happened at the school that day, and they would need to know that the student has been around something that these dogs alerted on, and as far as keeping that student themselves independent of the classroom, you know, it's gonna be difficult to be able to just keep them completely undercover.
No, my question is, that other 28 students in the class that see this backpack and student leave the room?
Right.
There's a stigma attached to that. Have we thought about that? Have you discussed that possibility with the, this group?
Yes, and there has been discussion with other districts who use this program, maybe with other companies as well, and there hasn't been a real good solution. It's one of those sort of things that they could, you know, the, the old saying goes, if I could bottle this, I could be rich, kind of things. It's not easy to respond to an alert a dog might have on a student's backpack or their desk without that student being subject to at least somebody else knowing that that alert was, was made. I mean, it can't very well just be put on the back burner until the student, you know, goes to lunch and then be called in with a call slip because it has to be addressed immediately.
Mrs. Cordero.
My concern has been that we're moving forward with this proposal before we have the protocols in place, which definitely have a huge impact, and I've said this all before, on whether I would support using the dogs or not because I wanna know how they're gonna be used. But that's sort of all water under the bridge. But you just raised another concern for me, and that is, you responded to the question regarding sort of, the dogs alerting on something and then finding nothing there, by saying that we would, that you then, we would then meet with the parents to sort of inform them of what's going on with their child, that their child has maybe been somewhere where they somehow acquired the scent of something on their belongings. And originally, or the, the purpose of the, of the drug dogs was intended to be to keep students from bringing substances onto campus. It concerns me if we are, if we use it to inform parents of other things that also may have unclear origins. For example, we do not know where the student acquired the scent. We don't know if the student was socializing with people who were using illegal substances. We don't know if somebody put it in their backpack unknowing to them. We don't know if they just happened to be sitting near someplace where it was happening. And so I'm a little concerned about now moving beyond identifying substances on campus to bring, sort of informing parents when there might be a scent of something on the student's property that we have, we don't know how it got there.
Excuse me, it's been my experience in working with other drug dog companies that that comes out in the discussion with the student once the alert has happened. Very typically, and it's usually included in the reports we get from the organization that the alert occurred, we had the student come to the office, we discussed it, and the reports I've seen will say, as a, as a statement from the student, this is possibly what happened. I was at a party over the weekend, somebody spilled beer in my backpack, or, you know, I was with somebody's, in somebody's car that was smoking marijuana or something like that over the weekend or last night or something like that. So that's the sort of thing that would create some discussion possibly with the parent or directly with the student particularly, but it would help determine on how that alert occurred or why the alert occurred.
Mrs. Parker?
As a parent of a current high school student, I know that I would want that phone call from administration, even if it turned out that it was secondhand, essentially. You know, I would always, I know that there's not time, all the time, for administrators to contact principal, contact parents every single time a kid ends up in the principal's office or an AP's office, but in an ideal world, there is that kind of whole family communication on. I just, I thought we might take advantage of the fact that there is a sight principal in the audience, Mr. Beckio.
This is why, exactly why I don't want principals to know the coordinates.
Because I just quickly, I mean, obviously, right now, we have alerts that happen with, with teachers and site staff that smell things or suspect things, and something's not there right now. But, I mean, how is that protocol handled? I don't know if Mr. Beckio, Mr. Sumter, you wanna answer that? I don't know if sometimes parents are contacted as it stands.
Well, part of the process, and Mr. Beckio, come on up, I mean, I'll give you the mic and you can do, part of the process would be that notification. I mean, if the, the goal is to deter controlled substances from coming to our campuses, then we would want to ensure that parents are being contacted if, if their student is involved in an incident where an alert happened. So that would need to be, you know, perhaps like the end result or the end, one of the end steps in the whole thing to make sure parents are notified, just as they should be notified in other disciplinary actions.
So currently, if, if we, and we do from time to time smell certain things when we're around kids, and currently, we would contact the parent about substance that we might smell. If we do a search, we always, the board policy states we really do need to contact the parents on that. But I'm a firm believer in letting the parents know the information that we have about their kids, and so it would not be different than what we currently are doing. If a, a dog would alert on a smell, we would notify them that this is the incident that happened today at school, and so. Now, as far as what happens when the student comes back to class, I think that was your question, Mr. Heron, and there would be, I think there would be chatter among kids. That happens when we currently, you know, we try to keep a low profile if we smell something and are gonna conduct a search, but that would probably inevitably be a conversation other kids would have about what took place.
Ms. Limon.
Thank you, Mr. Beckio. I think it is important for parents to be notified if their son or daughter was part of a search. But I also think that it's short-sighted to believe that these dogs are 100% accurate. And if they smell something and there's a false positive, it doesn't always mean that there is residual. They just, the dogs can make a mistake. And I think what I heard Mr. Heron say is, what are we, the adults, going to do about trying to make sure that in effort to do something that will decrease the amount of drugs on campus, we don't now punish students who may have been at a park playing baseball and their backpack was just lying there next to a creek and something else that was happening in the creek? I don't wanna punish students who didn't do anything. And I think that my question is really about, well, what are the adults going to do? How are we going to handle that situation in the classroom? How are we going to put a stop on the chatter? What kinds of conversations are we going to have amongst the staff, amongst the school site administrators, amongst the teachers to make sure that their peers don't tag them, don't stereotype them, don't label them? Because those are unintended consequences of this. And so I don't know if we've thought about that, but if we have, I'd like to know real specifics on what the district is going to do to work with the adults to make sure that all kids, you know, are safe. And they're really innocent until proven guilty. I mean, what do we do? How do we stop the chatter? How do we, I mean, do we have conversations? Perhaps these are things that we're going to be addressing in the next three weeks as the InterQuest goes to our high school sites. I, I don't know, but I really wanna make sure that in effort to provide a safe environment for all of our students, we don't provide an unsafe environment for students who unfortunately get a false positive.
Well, the interesting thing is, I've listened very patiently through the whole conversation, and, and I think it's perhaps because there's been no experience about this. The reality is, is that the number of alerts the dogs will make are a handful. I mean, we're not talking about they're, that Santa Barbara High is gonna be pulling out hundreds of kids out of class every time a dog shows up. That simply isn't the experience unless we really have a problem at our high school. That's simply not the experience. So it will be probably a very small group of kids, and that, they're still significant because every child matters. So I don't anticipate that it's going to be a, a community-wide, you know, 150 kids were in the assistant principal's office because the canine was here today. And I don't think that, the question that you've asked is, it is, should not be asked only in relationship to this. It should be asked in relationship to everything that happens at a school and how adults work with children. And that is, and to be able to give you a specific, this is the protocol that we're gonna tell teachers on how they deal with kids who get pulled out of the class to the administration, I think would be a wrong, the wrong approach, would be my suggestion. My approach would be, here's what we believe teachers should do as they relate to children about anything that happens in their classrooms. That we want relationships with them. We don't want teachers or the adults to be part of any sort of rumors or labeling kids. We expect them to act like adults, treat the children appropriately. I think it's a bigger issue that we have to attack, address, and I think, I'm hopeful that our move toward restorative discipline is gonna make a big difference in that. We're gonna take a lot of time this summer to look at that, you know, as our leadership team, as you know, Santa Barbara Junior High is gonna pilot it next year. We're gonna look at quite a few things in relationship to how teachers work with children. But I think it's a bigger issue than just the canines. I think it's, it relates to how teachers work with students in relationship to homework completion, how they assign grades, how they greet them when they enter the classroom, who they call and who they don't call on in the context of the classroom. It's, it's a big ongoing issue that I, we need to address, but it's gonna, it's, I think it's a bigger issue, so.
And if I could mention too, I think in terms of the chatter and reducing that issue, many times we find that, you know, the student who's called out of class generates that chatter, and I think some discussion with them to say, you know, the discussion of this stops here, you know, if nothing was discovered or whatever it was, you don't need to be talking about this with other students or other staff. You know, this is something that, that if there's an issue, that you need to deal with with your parents and, and go from there, but that's one, at least one step in helping curb that chatter.
We've got work to do in this area, no doubt.
Thank you. I, I actually really appreciate and value what everyone has said because I think everyone has a valuable perspective on this. And the reason that I supported the drug dogs initially was because I do think they provide a deterrent, and I would hope the chatter would be among the students. Don't bring drugs to school, don't leave your backpacks in places where other students are smoking dope if they are, and, and basically, you know, you have nothing to worry about. I, Mrs. Cordero and I attended a demonstration, it's been quite a while ago now, but I remember we asked the question about false positives, and in a term, in a way, that term is, is really misleading because even if there are no drugs in a backpack, that backpack has been exposed to drugs in some way, and I think it's more, I think the contact has to be more than just kind of lying down next to something that, that might smell. I think it has to have actually permeated the, the fabric of the backpack in order to have that odor, so. But again, my main concern is deterrent, and so I, you know, I, I'm hopeful that that's how this is going to work, and if we have problems, obviously, we wanna be nimble and be able to correct immediately, and our object is not to punish students. Our object is, is to get drugs out of the school.
If, if we have a number of circumstances where we have what some might interpret as a mistake, I mean, that's something clearly that Marlin and I would be dealing with immediately. I mean, because that would not be the purpose of the, the program. So, I mean, if that was, if we were to start going down that road, we wouldn't go very far before we went timeout, what's going on, what do we need to do? I think that would be the only responsible way to look at any implementation. And if it doesn't do, some, one of you asked earlier, and Marlin answered it perfectly, but this, I'll echo Marlin's answer, and that is, if it doesn't do what you need it to do, we won't be back here. I mean, we wouldn't bring it back. I mean, if it doesn't deter contraband on high school campuses, we can't afford it, and it's, has inherent danger. We wouldn't bring it back.
Well, I would hope that, and the public now knows that we're going to have these three demonstrations at the three high schools, so I would really like everyone to get the word out about that so that they can come in. I know as board members, we'll probably wanna go too. Mrs. Cordero.
I would just like to know then, if we could maybe get some kind of document similar to what you just handed out to us, outlining for us how we will evaluate whether it's being successful or not, and how we will determine whether any students are feeling negative impacts from, you know, any alerts that the dogs have had that seem unwarranted.
Mrs. Parker?
I'm going to move to approve the services agreement from InterQuest Detection Canines.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Cash has, Cash has a question.
I wanna make sure that we get what Ms. Cordero, so the second, first part's very clear, second part.
Well, we were talking about, for example, I think I shared before that I have, I have a student at my, in my class at Santa Barbara City College who shared with me that when he was in his, in high school, they had the drug dogs in his school. He was identified and he dropped out of high school. I wanna know, you know, I want to know if there's, if we are going to have any way of determining whether it's having any negative impacts on students.
So a tracking system for those students who've been identified?
Yeah.
Did he drop out because he was falsely accused, or?
I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. But my concern would be even if the student is rightly accused... But my concern would be even if the student is rightly accused, we don't want them dropping out of school, so.
Correct. As we wouldn't in any instance where they're caught with any illegal substance. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the service agreement with InterQuest Detection Canines. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes five zero.
If I could mention, since it was brought up, we do have three community demonstrations scheduled on the 17th, which will be next week on Thursday at Santa Marcos High School Cafeteria. And then on the 21st at Santa Barbara High School Theater. And then on the 24th at Dos Pueblos High School Cafeteria, all at 6:30 PM.
At 6:30 PM?
Yes.
Okay. And that did go out in E-News today, but see some of the members of the media here.
To see if the media is going to be getting the word out for us as well.
That would be good. Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. We are now moving to, we're returning to Board Action on Student Discipline, case number 111225 and 111229.
In case 1112 dash 25, I move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel for a full school year expulsion.
I will second that.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, no. Motion passes five zero.
In case 11 slash 12 dash 29, I move to approve the administrative hearing panel recommendation for a once school year full expulsion.
I will second that.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, no. Motion passes five zero. Now, we are on to our presentation by the Wellness Council. Thank you. It's good to see familiar faces here. Mr. Heron and I have been attending these Wellness Council meetings and know firsthand of all the great work you're doing. And Monica is here from Dos Pueblos, also a math teacher on the side.
Yes.
Or not on the side, but as a primary.
Right now, it's on the side.
But you're a champion of wellness. We know that.
Well, thank you, Board President Deacon and board members and Dr. Cash, Mrs. Savasky and Mr. Teng. Before I begin, if I may, Board President Deacon, you ran away from the last meeting too.
Oh, oh, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
And I do have some slides, I believe.
I have them.
You have them?
Condensed one or?
Yeah, the condensed one. First off, I'd like to talk about our accomplishments this year. In our three meetings, we averaged 20 people per meeting and the people made up of community members, teachers, some administrative people, nutrition services and county health as well. I'd like to recognize in our audience Susan Horn and Nancy Weiss, who are two of the people that are the backbone of our steering committee. So, thank you ladies for being here. In addition to our three meetings, we also submitted the wellness policy assessment that we used a previous year. Not quite there yet, but if you don't mind. We had better success this year in school sites filling this out. I did my math and I figured out that we are in about 85% compliance with the policy assessment. Some schools are better than others and actually at the junior high level, it's 100% compliance. So, overall with the others falling short a little bit, we averaged about 85, which I, I give us a B for that.
How's Santa Barbara High? The principal's right here.
Santa Barbara High is actually doing very well. We have two members on our steering committee from Santa Barbara High, and that's Rose Linehan from Sansom Diabetes Research Institute, as well as Joni Merrill. And you'll see Joni in one of the pictures coming up.
Just checking.
In addition to that, we looked at energy drinks, and I think we talked about this last year as well. Paul Cronshaw's done a great job researching what energy drinks are out there. And we're trying to find something other than heart rate, how it affects adolescent performance in the schools. Right now, if a monster or anything comes into my classroom, I pour it out. The kids don't like that so much, but I think it's in their best interest. In addition to energy drinks, we're looking at vending machines and the cost of running the vending machines, not just the contents and what's being advertised on the fronts of them, but the cost. And Joni Merrill from Santa Barbara High is actually heading that up. And she found that we're averaging about $450 per year per machine and more if it's placed in the sun. So, at this point, we're just doing some fact finding for vending machines and trying to get some information for you that's more concrete. Lastly, and most celebrated is our Districtwide Wellness Day. This is the second year that we've done Wellness Day. And now we can move on to the slides about the happy smiling faces of all the children celebrating Wellness Day. So, here we have Santa Barbara High's Week of Wellness. And there's Joni Merrill in the bottom photo there. They had quite a bunch of different activities for their Week of Wellness. One of the funnest thing, I think, was the smoothie bike. And you get on this bike and you pedal and you're actually making a smoothie on the back end of the bike while you're pedaling, which sounded fun. We can go on to the next one, thank you. This is La Cumbre Junior High School. They had Wellness and Disability Awareness Day, so they combined disability awareness with wellness. And they incorporated things like carrots in both science and art class. And I picked this photo because I think that guy's artwork was pretty darn good for a carrot. Next one. My hometown, Dos Pueblos High School, these are some of the guys that are putting together a rethink your drink display where you measure out gra, teaspoons of sugar to show how much sugar is in a certain beverage. And then this year, we were joined by the Permaculture Club for an information table. And the next one? And then La Cuesta got busy with jump ropes. They also had some green smoothies that Paul Cronshaw makes. They have a garden, they continue with their composting. And also Harvest of the Month happens at La Cuesta in both their art and English classes. So, I showed you slides mostly from secondary schools, but that doesn't mean elementary schools didn't do anything. They did a lot. They had kids running around with strawberries on spoons, relay races. Many of the elementary schools have gardens and they all welcome you to come and see their garden and even enjoy some of the harvest. Roosevelt School did food diaries and they looked at sort of before and after what the kids were eating. And then after completing their diaries, did it make a difference in how they selected their foods at home and at school at lunchtime? Adams School has this new thing, Julie Churchill, Churchman, sorry, is a PE teacher there. And she has this thing called Time for 10, that everybody's got time for 10 minutes just to move forward. And she has kids running laps before school and even counting up all their miles. And one of them's almost completed a marathon by now, a little first grader. So, that's fun to hear. So, for next year, we hope to continue with Wellness Day. Again, this will be our third annual. We want to continue with our caffeinated energy drink research, as well as the vending machine research, and also continue with the use of the policy assessment. So, I really want to thank you, the board, for your continued support and for joining our meetings, and Dr. Cash for supporting our Wellness Council as well. Can I answer any questions?
Someone gave us candy earlier. We're going to hide it.
I was thinking we'd bring carrots, but you'd have that crunch in the microphone. Maybe awkward strawberries, maybe next year.
Board members? Ms. Lee Moon?
So, thank you. Thank you to all of you who are doing this in our schools. It's really important, and I know that one of the things that we're most proud of is really the direction that our food services and nutrition has gone in this direction. So, thank you so much. You mentioned that you were trying to gather information about the impact of energy drinks, aside from heartbeat. And so, I know that our assembly member is working on and supporting a bill that would, that would maybe ban some of the actually sports drinks with high sugar. So, I, I wonder if there would be some value in connecting with our assembly member's office to see if they have more of the research that you're looking for because I see this in line with what our wellness policy is doing, so.
I think that's a great idea. That'd be a great resource.
And thank you.
Good suggestion. Mrs. Cordero?
You mentioned that, well, oh, first of all, thank you all. This is so great. I talked to some of my colleagues who are in other districts, and I think that we are doing so much better than so many districts. And not just in terms of our policies, but in terms of our attitudes. Because there are still some where the, the people in charge don't really support it. So, I just appreciate all the work that has been done in this district by so many of you and for so long. Because I think you've got us started way early in this curve. So, I appreciate that. And it definitely trickles down to the students. The students really internalize a lot of this. You mentioned that you thought we were about 85% in compliance. And I was wondering if you have any sense, or if there is any sort of, maybe common areas that people seem to be having difficulty achieving?
Sure.
That sort of the 15% that, that is challenging people?
Sure. One of the things that I see is, it's like one of the first things on this policy assessment, and that's a campus-wide marketing plan designed to promote student wellness, meaning posters, vending fronts, scoreboards and things like that. And that's where many schools answered no, that they don't feel they have that. And then the other common area was for staff, physical activity opportunities for school staff. And many schools said, no, they don't have that, but it's one of their goals, which was refreshing to see. Starting maybe a walking club on Wednesdays or, you know, use the pool on Fridays if you're a secondary school, things like that. So, things that I found in common that they were not meeting the policy assessment for, they set that as their goal, which was good to see.
Mrs. Parker?
I'd just like to echo my thanks because without the Wellness Council, the policies would be going nowhere. It does take that kind of vigilance. And I, I appreciate, I mean, there are, there are parents and staff members out there that sometimes feel like, you know, the wellness thing, it can be like the food Nazis and that it's, it's too much. But I feel like we've, we've found a compassionate way forward that's not so critical, but it's more supportive in getting staff and parents and students to change their attitudes around food. I really feel like we've been very positive in that way. So, that's great. For the Wellness Day, I have two students at Adams, my children, and that was, they were so excited. I mean, that was fantastic.
Excellent.
And I also appreciate the way you're, you're integrating things over, you know, the schools are doing other things as well. Like this Wednesday is Bike to School Day. You know, Santa Barbara High is having some fabulous activities and no doubt going to cause quite a traffic jam on, in a Pumou because they're closing the Cannon Prudito entrance. But the kids are really looking forward to it. And I, I just feel like we're, we're moving in such a great direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I want to just state that I'm really just a conduit. I really couldn't be here without the support of our steering committee and all the members of the Wellness Council, including our board members.
I'd just like to say that, yeah, Monique, I had the opportunity to lobby Doss's assistant. And I told him to go talk to Paul Cronshaw.
Good.
Who can feed him a lot of information about it, so.
No pun intended.
We're both working together, yeah. And I have been to a lot of meetings and I can just say, it's amazing. You get 20, on average, interested staff people on their own time, I think, coming and sharing and participating and learning and the stories and the ideas that bounce back and forth. It's a very, very lively discussion. And so, you, the whole group has done a great job making it important. Because I can tell you, people don't go to a meeting if they, if they don't think it's important.
That's true.
They don't have to be there.
Right.
But they seem to love it and do it, and it's very good.
Yeah. It's hard to keep it to an hour and a half sometimes.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. Heron, because this is on their own time. These people are really dedicated and passionate about this issue. And when you see someone like Joni Merrill going around and doing an inventory of vending machines and basically an energy audit for us, that's terrific. And I love the fact that we have this overlap between energy efficiency and wellness. And there's so many places that those points intersect. And so, it's, it's great because we're moving forward on multiple points there. So, thank you again for your time and for the time of everyone who has participated because this is really valuable and we're making great progress. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We are now going to return to our consent agenda items. We'll start with D5. Mrs. Parker?
D5, that was the approval of the agreement between Los Padres Council, Learning for Life and Santa Barbara Unified School District for the 1213 school year. This is the annual outdoor school program. And I pulled this because I was concerned last year that Cleveland had dropped the program. And this year, Cleveland, Harding and McKinley are not going to be participating. And.
No, no, Cleveland is going.
Cleveland is not on this list.
Yeah.
If you switch the.
Oh, so Cleveland's going back in this year. So, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So, it's Harding and McKinley. I, to me, this is sort of ground zero of inequity between our schools. I know that, at least in the case of McKinley, this was an issue of they want the best value and they're saying that they're going to do something different for the kids that might be equivalent. Outdoor school, and I'm not saying that it has to be outdoor school. There are other science trips, but outdoor school is actually fairly comparable to the other ones. So, if you're talking, you can, you can get cheaper, but you're going for fewer days. So, it's not really the same experience. And I'm just really concerned in terms of these sort of away trips for a lot of our sixth graders, this is actually the first time and the only time that they'll have a camping experience, first time away from their families. And usually in a, in an atmosphere where they've, they've known the kids for so long, their peers, over the course of elementary school, it's really very special beyond the science content, which is important as well. And I, I worry that some of our schools, our students are getting it and some aren't, and it's really based ultimately on income. And, and I feel like, you know, I'm certainly going to move to approve this, and in fact, go ahead and make a motion to approve the agreement between Los Padres Council and the district. But I think it really needs to be a more intense discussion because I'm, I'm not sure that sometimes principals recognize how much parents value it and how much students value it. I mean, it's something that my older child, I've got one that's there right now. I have, you know, one that went through it and they talk to their peers about it, kids that they hadn't met before, you know, some, they're going with two different schools, they're going to be at junior high together. And I think it's a loss that sometimes the elementary principals who are focusing on the bottom line and maybe want to direct their science dollars in a different direction, they're, they're losing sight of some of the big picture items.
Ms. Lee Moon?
So, I will, I think that that was a motion. So, I will second that. And I actually, I agree with Mrs. Parker. And I would just hope that we would have that conversation. And if it is a financial issue that we talk about ways to address this and if there's other issues, I still remember my sixth grade camp. And the part that you said about meeting people who you will go to junior high with, which was Santa Barbara Junior High, was a big part of it. I met folks there and I started off, that's the part that I remember the best because I, one of my best friends went to Roosevelt's and I was at Cleveland at the time, and she's still one of my really good friends that lives across the country. So, I think there's so much more there. And I would hope that we, and there's something to be said about getting our students outdoors and outside of the classroom. So, I, I would just hope that we'd further explore it.
We do have a motion, a second. I just have a quick question then. Do some of the schools go to Astro Camp and see me?
No, they, well, actually.
Roosevelt.
Yes, Roosevelt does.
And Washington. And I think that kind of says it all right there.
It does.
For fifth grade.
It says it all.
Well, Franklin actually does that and also does the tall ships for fourth graders. They have a fifth grade trip. I'd have to look at that. But I asked all the principals about this today. And I did hear back from Sally Kingston about Harding's decision. And I shared with you earlier McKinley, so. But, I mean, if, if it is, the issue really becomes, and if it's a district priority, then, then we'll have to treat, we should treat every student the same and not require parent fundraising. But the alternative to that is when I posed that question to one of those two principals and said, well, why aren't, you could use other funds that clearly able, their response was, well, we think we can do better things than Rancho Allegre.
Well, I think you've heard some board members' thoughts on this.
Yep, absolutely.
And it would probably be good for us to hear what those other things are because we don't want to make a decision in the absence of not knowing. we don't want to make a decision in the absence of not knowing what that is either, so. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. And now, D6, Mrs. Parker.
Yes, I pulled this, this is AR 511 1.1, District Residency, and I pulled this because when we discussed this originally, I thought, I think we all thought that this was CSBA language under the proof of residency, and we'd made some changes to that stack of six bullet points. Actually, it's law. It got chaptered in, in the fall, so we can't remove voter registration, and the language in the bill is correspondence from a government agency, period. So, I would suggest that we, that I move to approve the District Residency Administrative Regulation with number four being added back in voter registration, and the language on number five simply reading correspondence from a government agency, and then, number six would become the affidavit of District Residency.
I have to tell you, I visited a school recently, and I asked the principal about this, and she said, she reminded me, because I really knew this, that you can, anybody can get something notarized. I mean, you're just, they're just attesting that you're saying what you're saying is, so. But at any rate, it looks like there's multiple opportunities here to verify residency, so. Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes, five zero. D12, Mr. Herron.
Yes, I pulled this only from the standpoint that at the last meeting, we talked about this, and I had four questions, and I wanted to report back that, for the most part, I now have the four questions answered, but I would like to just make them of record. My first question was that the $500,000 from the district will be used at such time as the grant funds and the loan funds have been used for the project. I described as last in, last out. And Mr. Hunt Young was nice enough to comment on most of these, and he assured me that that is an accounting function and that definitely our $500,000 will be used up after the grant and the loan funds, and that they'll be used for the purposes of the construction project. It's interesting to keep in mind that even though this, this contract is for $2,006,006, there's another 20% to 25% on top of that for soft, soft costs, I guess, and we've already spent $280,000 of that on planning. And so, it's still a major project, but it looks like, if you do the numbers, we might not have to use all of our $500,000, which I appreciate. And that was my second question. Well, excuse me, my second question was that the Foundation reaffirmed their agreement regarding the grant funds and the loan funds, and are in total support of going forward. I asked this as a result of something I had heard from Mr. Hunt Young, that may not have been the case, or in the process may not have been the case, but I was handed a letter tonight, basically agreeing that they are taking on the obligation of the $1,442,158 loan at 2.568% interest payable in 10 annual equal payments of, the payment isn't on here, but it's, it's like $160,000. So, they are, and they have moved to reaffirm that they want to proceed with the project. So, I was happy to get this signed by the President, Mr. Polisi, who's in the audience. So, I appreciate that. The third was, all parties agree to reduce, if at all possible, the construction expenses as the project moves forward, and as you'll see tonight, they, they have gotten together and they have reduced the price down to some degree, down to $2,006,006. And I think that's a good accomplishment, and I appreciate it. And then, agree that the district should be at no further expense if the project exceeds the agreed-to lease-back, the lease-leaseback agreement, and Mr. Hunt Young has assured me that in the other projects that we do, if there's any change orders, they have to be approved and agreed to, and so, we can be assured that the, there'll be control over the expenses. I just want to make sure we all understand that this is totally different than what we've done in the past with the other situations, the Indian Academy, is that, you know, there's a $1,400,000 loan, there's a $1,400,000 grant, that's $2,008,000, the project is $2,006,000 There's very little skin in the game from the Foundation, other than their assurance that they'll pay this loan back, and we, the district signs the loan agreement. So, this is, this is a situation where, there'd been four years, back in 2008, the Foundation agreed to start raising money to pay off this loan, but yet, we're funding the project from day one, basically with a loan and a grant. So, it's different. I'll make the motion to approve going forward, I'm not sure, with the Resolution Number 2011-2012-54, authorizing the lease-leaseback process, adopting plans and specifications, and authorizing execution, delivery of site lease and facilities lease, and other acts relating to the Santa Barbara High School Multimedia Arts and Design Academy relocation project.
Second. Mrs. Parker, we have a motion in a second.
And can I just say thank you to Mr. Polisi for your letter to Mr. Herron, and also for the work that the MAD Foundation is doing. I know that you, you probably have almost all the money that you need to pay the loan back over the next several years as it stands, and I have every faith that this will go forward smoothly.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. And thank you for staying. We appreciate that. We know you were at the end, and we look forward to this project, let me tell you. We all really look forward to what, what we're going to have on that campus.
Madam President, may I ask Mr. Beckio a question?
Yes, Dr. Cash.
Who won the volleyball game?
Eight, five, and fifth. Eight, five, and fifth, we're up.
Right now? Oh, gosh.
Thank you, Mr. Beckio. Your presence has been hugely helpful. Thanks.
All right, we, I think we need to return to D13. Mr. Hunt Young told us that the, there was some substitute wording, and so, why don't we just, let me entertain a new motion with the new language on D13. Did you want to clarify that?
Yeah, the resolution, as it was printed in the agenda, had an incorrect contractor. It had Shock Contracting Corporation, and the substitute resolution we've provided you has the correct contractor, Lash.
I will move to rescind the previous approval of Resolution 2011/12-55 and approve the amended Resolution 2011/12-55.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.
May I ask a question on this?
Yes.
From the times that I've gone back and looked at things, if past is future, the wrong document will be on the website, and the new one doesn't get substituted in. Can we make sure that the new one gets substituted in, in some way, or the, or the minutes will say there was an amended motion, but it's awful hard sometimes to go back and find out what the amended motion was, because the documents themselves never get changed. So, this would be a prime example. I'd like to see the right document on, on the website under this agenda, so that 10 years from now, we can look at it and make sure we have the right one.
Sounds like a checklist item. Okay, thank you for mentioning that. All right, coming events?
Have you found that?
Well, we know about the drug dog demonstrations, and of course, we've got all our great student award ceremonies, some, a few of them that will occur before our next meeting. Anything else?
We also have strategic plan meetings at the high schools, I understand.
That's right, that's right. Could we ask that that, that information also go out in E-News about the strategic planning meetings at the sites?
Yes.
Okay, because we were talking about that earlier, and we weren't, I think, there was some confusion about whether, in fact, that had already gone out or not yet, so, thank you. All right, and future agenda items?
I wanted to just comment on a coming event, just to let people know that Adelante is having a dinner this Thursday for Dia de las Madres, and it is $10, it's a very inexpensive meal, and they're going to have, I think, dancing and mariachi, and it should be fun. So, May 10.
Great, thank you very much. All right, well, having heard that, I believe we've concluded our business. Our meeting is adjourned.